The brush and then the light goes on. Not all of these have a light, but ours does. The brush and then the light goes on.
This is not a limited state.
Right, that's exactly right.
Welcome to the July Public Meeting of the Arlington County Planning Commission. Established in 1956, the Arlington County Planning Commission is a citizen advisory body authorized by the Virginia State Code. Its members are appointed by the Arlington County Board. The Planning Commission promotes the orderly development of Arlington County and its environs by advising the county board on development, land use, public facilities, and zoning. All Planning Commission meetings are audio and videotaped, so you may find past meetings on the county website. Please turn off all cell phones now, if you could, and please keep them away from the microphones, as there can be feedback. If you would like to speak tonight, please remember to get your speaker slip into the clerk, Ms. Johnson, sitting to my right, before the item is called. You will be called to the podium to speak two by two. When you hear your name called, please come to the front of the room and speak in the order that your name has been called. The podium can be raised or lowered to suit your height. Tonight, we have four substantive, what I would call substantive, agenda items in addition to our organizational matters meeting at the end. Two items have been pulled from our agenda. The Staples Site, the applicant has asked for this item to be withdrawn from our agenda, and the county manager has deferred the amendment of the MTP on South Queen Street from our agenda tonight. So, we will not be hearing those items, and consequently, there won't be any speakers for this item, any public speakers for this item. The items that we do have consist of a presentation on the proposed capital improvement plan. This is an information item only, and we don't take testimony on that item.
No.
We have an ordinance, a vacation, to vacate a portion of a street in Bolston Quarter. You'll hear about that fully announced when the time comes. A resolution to establish two new fees on the Department of Community Planning Housing and Development's consolidated zoning fee schedule. And a request to authorize the advertisement of public hearings by the Planning Commission and County Board to consider a general land use plan amendment on Columbia Pike. The address of that property is 2300 South 9th Street, and you'll hear more about that That is an introduction to what we will and will not be doing tonight. And so, Madam Clerk, will you call the first item?
Our first item is a presentation. The county manager's office proposed capital improvement plan for FY 19 through FY 28. This is an informational item only, which will be discussed with the Planning Commission. And we have Karen Tally and staff from the Department of Management and Finance to discuss this item.
Good evening. I'm Steve Agostini. I am the Director of Management and Finance and the County CFO. I'm going to go over the presentation that the county manager has presented to the board. And some of you have seen this in the context of an invitation to Advisory Commission Chairs and Vice Chairs to review this. So, I'll get started. The CIP proposed for the 19 through 28 period is roughly $2.8 billion over the 10-year period. Includes a great many things. Includes investments in metro, parks and recreation, stormwater and utilities, community conservation, maintenance capital, many of the things that, if you have seen this presentation in prior CIP cycles, will not surprise you. There are some changes, and we'll get to them momentarily, primarily around metro and what the state has created as a solution to metro with the adjoining states of Maryland and the District of Columbia, and how that has altered what we have available in terms of moving forward and ability to spend. Includes a great many things. Transportation and roads, a lot of maintenance of our state of good repair, which I'll talk about in a little more detail in a moment. Parks and recreation, as I mentioned, including replacement of major renovation and/or major renovation of outdoor parks and recreation facilities, as well as the county's own facilities. Next slide. In setting the way forward for the capital improvement plan, the county manager focused on three particular areas. The first was sort of foundational investments. And what we're treating as foundational investments are metro, transit development plan for Columbia Pike, as well as schools. Then we tried to maintain a state of good repair for county assets that we currently have in place. And so, that became an additional focus for how we moved forward. A focus that we tried to meet not only with bonding, but also with pay-as-you-go dollars that were not originally included in the operating budget for FY 19. And then, as the manager likes to say, we wanted to follow through on a number of existing commitments that have sort of spanned a number of years, including years between the last CIP that was proposed two years ago and this current CIP. And those include Fire Station 8, Jenny Dean Park, the Knocktown Square project, Lover Run, and Long Bridge. We also incorporated what we heard from the public. We went out with a survey early in the process, and we got about 4,000 comments, 3,000 distinct and unique respondents. And what we heard from the public was that schools, the maintenance of existing assets, a focus on metro, a focus on pedestrian safety, and fiscal responsibility were very critical to their perception of how we were doing what we were doing. And so, as we heard those and looked through all of those comments, we attempted to sort of incorporate that as we moved forward. And you'll see a lot of that sort of emphasized as we move forward in this presentation. $2.8 billion over the 10 years requires us to fund it from a variety of sources. Most notable are three areas. The Transportation Capital Fund, which is inclusive of the commercial and industrial tax, and a lot of regional and local funding sources that derive from statewide sources like NVTA regional and NVTA local. General Obligation Bonds, which this process, as you know, will culminate in the board adopting a referenda, a set of referenda questions that will be placed on the ballot in the fall. And then, a number of other sources that include utility capital funds, utility geo-bonds, developer contributions, tax increment financing, that in the aggregate make up about 29%. And between those, what you're looking at is roughly 84% to 85% of the entire amount for the capital plan. 80%. As we were putting together this capital plan, we found ourselves with limited flexibility in the near and medium term. This is not surprising to us, given what we had, were challenged with in putting together the operating budget for FY 19, where the slowing down in real estate assessment growth, along with significant demands on the service base and significant demands from metro and schools, meant that we had a lot less discretion in how we were going to put together the budget. Those same challenges were operative when we put together the capital improvement plan. As I mentioned, we had a significant increase in the metro obligation that was the result of dedicated funding that was provided by the state. That dedicated funding came from sources that were, in prior years, used by the county to fund a number of transportation investments. We had existing commitments to fulfill, like the ones I just went over. Lower-than-expected tax revenues, which had the effect of lowering the amount of revenues we had available to go forward. And increased costs for a number of current projects, like APS, like the Knocktown Square. And so, that had the effect of very much limiting the flexibility and the discretion that we had going forward, with the biggest sort of determinant of that is what happened with metro. I'll talk about that a little more detail. As I mentioned, the county manager had set some foundational investments forward, most notably metro and transit, as well as Arlington Public Schools. Over the next two years, $54 million will be borrowed on behalf of metro. $293 million over 10 years. This meets our obligations under new regional funding agreement, and, as I mentioned, includes Maryland and the District of Columbia. It represents the highest funding level for metro ever proposed, but enables us to maintain the investment in that very significant asset for the region. Some of this, most of this was not something that we had a choice about. It was something that was dictated from Richmond. And for us to honor the commitments and the discussions that took place in the agreements, it meant that we had to contribute much more significantly than we had anticipated and had done in prior years. Similar foundational investment is with Arlington Public Schools. While the first eight years of our proposed plan maintains the funding level of what was assumed in the prior CIP of roughly $300 million, in the last two years of the CIP, '27 and '28, we added an additional $100 million in funding for the final two years in order to help schools address a lot of the requirements and challenges they will have with significant need receipts, given their significant growth in enrollment. As I mentioned, we were also focused on state of good repair. And with that, what we attempted to do in the budget was to be sure that we were able to maintain that very extensive set of assets that we own as a county. And so, where we made those proposed investments were in the following areas. Over 10 years, $138 million for paving over the 10 years, which we hope, all things being equal, like weather and the cost of materials, will allow us to spend roughly $14 million a year in order to maintain a paving condition index close to where we are today. Similarly, we are proposing spending $46 million for art fleet maintenance and replacement in order to maintain the fleet. And $24 million for streetlight, which is a 20% increase from the prior CIP. For Parks and Recreation, we're looking at $30 million for synthetic turf replacement. And about $81 million for major maintenance across the entire sort of asset base of Parks In other areas, like public government facilities, we're looking at approximately $83 million over the 10 years, which includes a very significant amount of Pago funding, which will have to be provided out of the operating budget for purposes of maintaining our facilities. As I mentioned, this is a slight change from what we had in the operating budget for '19, but it was the only manner in which we could actually meet those needs for state of good repair moving forward over the 10-year period. For technology and public safety, we're looking at roughly $21 million for PC replacement, network maintenance, in order to maintain those assets and the stability of the network, as well as over $21 million for fire breathing apparatus, mobile data terminals, radio replacement, and some other critical needs for our public safety departments. The county manager has mentioned on numerous occasions that moving forward on existing commitments was a priority in putting forward this particular CIP. As many of you know, and I believe you've been involved in, there are a number of those existing commitments, and I'll just mention them quickly, since I suspect many of you have been much more engaged in them than I have been, that represent commitments that have been made over the prior few years. That includes commitments for Fire Station 8, roughly $21 million moving forward, the Lover Run Community Center, roughly $48 million, Knocktown Square, roughly $6 million. Jenny Dean Park, roughly $18 million. The Long Bridge Aquatics and Fitness Facility of $71 million. And finally, Roslyn Highlands Park, $9.8 million. Another area where the manager proposed a budget that would maintain the commitment was in the area of transportation. There's a commitment to maintain the investments in the transit development plan for the Columbia Pike, as well as the state of good repair. Approximately $91 million has also been dedicated for purposes of maintaining the operations of those investments along the Columbia Pike, something that has not been done in prior years, to the extent that we have proposed in this capital plan. Along with just over $200 million for using Pago, NVTA local funds, geo-bonds, as well as the commercial and industrial tax to maintain the state of good repair across a variety of facilities, including bridge maintenance, curb and gutter, paving, traffic calming devices, trail light maintenance. I mentioned the art fleet, and equipment replacement, and art fleet rehab. There were a number of decisions that became very difficult to make, and in that process, some of the projects that had been included in prior, the prior capital cycle, had to be either deferred, reduced, and new requests not funded. Briefly going over those, in the transportation and roads area, the additional metro entrances at Crystal City, Boston, East Falls Church are at risk, and some of these have actually come to fruition in terms of not getting funded pending regional funding decisions. And that may require us to go back and reprioritize other decisions. For public government facilities, we had anticipated in prior discussions, doing more in the area of Buck and Carlin Springs properties. For the moment, what we have is $3 million for Buck and $1.5 million for demolition of existing buildings in Carlin Springs. But in terms of repurposing that, those two facilities moving forward, we do not have the funding in place at this point. We are currently doing a study of the Courts and Police Building for purposes of security, infrastructure, and renovation. We anticipated that we would be able to fund some form of renovation in that in the out years, but that was another place where we had to make a decision, and we'll have to revisit that once the conclusions of that study come back to us later this year. In the process, we're in the process right now of reviewing the Northside Salt Facility. We have $2.4 million in the capital allocated funding for prior capital years, but our ability to address many of the concerns there will be limited. We're in the process of discussing what those options might be right now. Similarly, in the areas of Parks and Recreation, we do not have funding for additional land acquisition for new parks. We have reduced the Neighborhood Conservation Program to $36 million over the 10-year plan. This is a reduction from $60 million in the last 10-year plan. And for Mosaic Park and Penrose Square, the second phases of both of those projects will be very dependent on redevelopment activities moving forward. And finally, with respect to the Danger Center modernization that we were anticipating, our Network Operations Center, we'll have to come back and revisit that. We could not find a way to fund a $10 million improvement in that area. We'll have some ongoing challenges with this capital plan. For example, strategies identified for art transit storage and maintenance facility needs have not been resolved. Many of our back-of-the-house needs that we had originally anticipated we would be able to address either through Buck or Carlin Springs have not yet been met. As I mentioned, limited investments for both of those two properties pending planning processes. We do have, however, $1 million to do needs and condition assessments so that we can be better targeted at the investments we're moving forward with over the next few years. The proposed bond referenda is currently at just under $141 million. $74.6 million for metro and transportation. Parks and Recreation at $29.3. Government facilities at $31.8. And community conservation at $5.2 million. And just recall that that represents the next two years of funding, not the entire 10-year cycle in front of us. One of the very significant challenges we had in this process was adhering to our debt policies. As you know, the county has adopted a policy where it will not incur debt in excess of 10% of its general government expenditures. And as you can see from the bar charts in front of you, we have come very close in the middle portion of the 10-year cycle to that 10%. That has real ramifications for us potentially moving forward. If interest rates go up, if the cost of projects comes in higher than we anticipated, we will have to go back and review the project lists that we have currently, so as not to go above that 10%. The 10% has some implications with respect to the bond rating agencies and how our debt is viewed in the investment community. In May, we were in front of the rating agencies, and the good news was that we received and retained our AAA ratings from all three of the major rating agencies. However, we were advised that adherence to those policies that we adopted, like the 10%, the ability to look at raising revenue in those instances when it becomes critical to support our operations going forward, and trends in our current status of our fund balance, which have been, which has been declining over the last five years, were things that the rating agencies were very cognizant of, were going to watch, and would look to in the aftermath of the end of the 2017, 2018 year, to be sure that we were still adhering to those policies moving forward. There were lots of questions asked of us of the 10% and how close we were going to get in the CIP, something that we are very cognizant of, that the closer we get to that, the more skeptical the rating agencies will be looking at us going forward. So, looking ahead, our pressures are likely to continue, and the financial landscape remains uncertain. We do not see any sizable rebounds necessarily in real estate assessments moving forward. And so, the constraint that that places on both the operating and capital budget is very real. As I mentioned, we'll have to, we'll have a chance to revisit and reexamine many of these decisions over the next two years. Some of that will be required because of the sort of external pressures that we'll be under. Some of it will just need to go back and try to solve some of the things we weren't able to solve in this particular CIP cycle. Finally, going over our calendar, as you know, we've been engaged in a number of work sessions in the May through June period. There was a public hearing on June 27th. The final board markup is next Tuesday on the 10th, with board adoption scheduled for July 14th. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Matters with the commission? Does anyone have a question? Commissioner McSweeney?
Thank you. On Slide 9, I think you were showing what was going to be in this bond referendum? Oh, I'm sorry, Slide 15. I just wanted to ask, so are there APS projects that are actually included in this, and is it under one of these subheadings?
Actually, APS will be separate from this.
Oh, okay, so you're not, that isn't included here, okay. I had another question, and it was Slide 9, sorry to make you go back there. We've been hearing from APS that they're seeing a 4% to 5% increase in both costs and construction together every year. And I was just wondering, is that something the county has been seeing, and is, are your projects, the projects that are listed here, are they, do they take that into consideration, that 4% to 5% increase, or does it not apply?
No, it applies to us, and we're certainly facing that and have seen that in bids that have come back as recently as two weeks ago. We have built an inflationary adjustment in the capital plan, but the kind of inflation cost increases that we're seeing in bids that we're opening in the last month or two, in some cases, is substantially above those inflationary estimates. It's a very different environment in which to do projects. And as I mentioned earlier, if cost increases come back, we'll have to go back and reassess where we are with a number of these projects.
And I have one more question, and it was about page number D19 of the CIP. It's in the technology and equipment. And I noted that there is a project for DHS Housing Choice Voucher and Local Housing Benefit Systems. And so, those are included in the bond?
Those are actually in our master lease program, where we do short-term financing in order to finance assets that have a useful life of less than seven years. We do a lot of technology in that, a lot of technology projects, and that particular project is in that component, so it's not in the referenda piece.
So, you can actually move forward now, or you probably already are? Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Yakimini?
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank you all and your staff for what I thought was a very readable CIP.
Oh, thanks.
I still am a paper person, so I enjoyed going through it. And I very much liked the little section that said how projects have changed from the previous CIP. I thought that was very helpful. I'm not sure it's been included in previous ones, it probably was, and I just didn't notice, but it really sort of held everything together, I thought, and so, I thank you all for that.
All thanks goes to Karen and the staff.
Karen, good work. You know, for me to say something like this, that's this thick, if people haven't seen it, is readable, I think, is a great thing. I did have a couple of questions. One does have to do with the Northside Salt Facility. I know that we don't have, we have some money in the out years for planning, but what we have to spend now is to do a temporary structure, or did I understand you to say that that's still being decided, how to handle it?
The original funding of the $2.4 million was The original funding of the 2.4 million was to do planning and to do something temporary. We're concerned about the state of that particular facility and whether the elements and the structure itself are going to survive, allow the structure to survive, and so...
I completely understand that. I've been watching it for years.
And that's actively being engaged in right now to see what our options might be. There may be more to come on that shortly.
So we will know that before the July 14th?
I'm not, I don't think so. We're, we're looking at what our options are, recognizing we have a certain amount of funding available. There are some assessments that need to be done about the state of the building and whether it will be useful, usable over the next six to nine months, particularly during the winter season. And with that in mind, we're trying to do the assessments right now to see if, if that is not the case, if it's not usable during the winter season, what are our options?
I bring this up because that, as we all know, that there's county land that has been purchased that's contiguous to this site, and there's a park, and there's, so I think there's lots of planning issues at the North 26th Street site that I think we will want to be very thoughtful about and have a very robust process, that while I know DES owns some of that, there, the other land was purchased not necessarily with a park in mind or with DES in mind. So I'm sort of hopeful that as we go forward, we actually have a collaborative planning process, it's not just led by DES, but that CPHD can be part of that as well.
Understood, thank you.
The, another one I have is on C17 that has to do with the boathouse. And now that the Park Service has their EIS out, right, that's, and have put out their preferred location that's in Arlington, are, does that change any of your proposal at all, or any thoughts in the CIP?
I'm actually going to let Carol, I mean, Karen talk about that, because she's a little more informed about this than I am.
At this point, no, we do not have any, any plans to change what we're doing with the boathouse and how we'll be involved with that process. We have the dollars in there now to help with planning, when the time is appropriate for that, but we don't have any, any plan to accelerate that process.
Okay, and I, sort of as a follow-on to that, with another Roslyn-type project is Gateway Park. And I think the money in there is for, what, 2022? And I ask some of this in, in thoughts, that with the Marriott site there possibly having some ideas, and I know we have an adopted Roslyn Sector Plan that is very clear about public improvements and, and public benefits, but that if we have something coming online from a developer, if we have the ability, if there needs to be some county investment to put some of that forward or to at least point to it.
I appreciate immensely that you're looking at Erin and saying...
Yeah. No, Erin, you can't look behind your shoulder, but...
We hear you.
And that's, I just think that's important, and sometimes, though, we do bank and save up some of our developer contributions, but that's such a very interesting area, and Gateway Park and the boathouse, I think, are all going to play a very significant role there. So I, I just put those markers down, so, thank you very much.
Commissioner Schrell, and then Commissioner Weir.
Thank you for your presentation. Just a couple of questions about the art bus replacement and scheduled maintenance. So we've, there's been some news articles about the disrepair of our art buses, and the CIP here does a good job of letting us know the schedule for the buses to be purchased. I'm wondering, does that keep us on a state of good repair schedule? And I have another follow-up question about useful life.
I'm going to defer to Karen, because she understands that very well.
So the current plan that's here is, does recognize a state of good repair for the, the bus replacement, and also for the maintenance of those buses? In March, I believe, we just received another 13 new buses, and so the ongoing dollars do keep us in a state of good repair. That was the main focus. Some things had to be reduced, but for those, the, the basic core infrastructure for the transportation program, which includes our art buses, we had to make sure that state of good repair was kept with the dollars.
And Ms. Tally, it says in the CIP that we expect a 12-year life, I think, for buses. Are we, and it mentions that they're kind of six or eight years in, there's scheduled maintenance, but are we getting a 12-year life generally out of our buses?
I'm not exactly positive on that. I can get back to you on that. I know that there's, I believe it's 12-year, and then the maintenance adds another, I need to look at those exact years on that. But when we do the maintenance to the buses, it adds an additional, I believe it's five to seven years. And so, there, there is value to doing the maintenance. Sometimes, depending, the buses may be in such a state of dish repair that they have to be replaced versus going through maintenance, and so we have to shuffle things around to accommodate that. But for the most part, the dollars that are included are for the replacement and then the maintenance to extend the useful life.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, I would certainly like to just kind of know how we're doing on that, something I'm sure people out in the community are concerned about as well, so, thanks for including it.
Commissioner Weir?
Thank you. What is the status of the premises improvement work for the Government Center, and how does it fit into, or where, where does that funding appear in the capital improvement plan?
Are you referring to this building?
I am.
So, the, the Bosman Center renovation is not included in the capital plan, principally because the funding was the result of negotiations and an agreement that the county entered into with the landlord for the building. And so, the vast majority of the funding for that is either in the form of tenant improvement allowances or rent abatements that are being utilized currently for the planning and anticipated construction. Very briefly, where we are today on the, on the renovation is, we are doing reviews of floors and what we're calling test fits of floors, having conversations with departments where we're planning to do some renovation. As you may know, though, the board made a decision back in the context of the operating budget to reduce the funding associated with that project in order to close some of the budget gap that they had in front of them. And so, that has meant rethinking some aspects of that renovation moving forward, so there's slightly less money available to do what was originally anticipated. But right now, we're in the planning stage with the expectation that with, you know, no further delays and an ability to reach some, some conclusions, we'll be in a place to do some construction probably in, you know, the early spring of 2019.
Commissioner Hughes?
Thank you. I'm on C89, I just want to confirm what I'm reading. My understanding from the presentation now is that you intend to bulldoze existing buildings that serve functional purposes at both Buck and Carlin Springs without any money or plan for how interim uses will be funded?
I am, actually, I don't know if Erin wants to answer that. I believe that what we have, we have some buildings there that we believe need to be taken down, they're not in the best shape.
Well, I take offense to that, having my daughter there every day and 140 other kids, but keep going.
But no, we do not have, as I said earlier, we don't have funding moving forward.
I, I point this out to my colleagues to remind us that we spent a great deal of money on a head start building down on Glebe Road, and it's further renovation, and here we have current buildings on sites that are occupying and serving purposes that we use in our community. In addition to that, our best use of the site continues to be to demolish it without any plan for its interim use or building. When we have the opportunity, its current uses, I believe, are an emergency room, are an emergency medical services, a childcare provider for about 150 kids, the Lions Club uses it for their class program, and the Arlington Free Clinic uses it as well. So that's the Carlin Springs site. I'm not as intimately familiar with the Buck site. But my concern is, as we plan our community, we can't gold-plate everything, and we have to make compromises sometimes. And that makes me greatly concerned, that we can find the money to bulldoze a building, but we can't find the money to try to keep it operating for our interim uses, even if it's not exactly what we want.
I haven't read the part of the CIP that you've just looked at, but can you confirm that these buildings, and it's not clear which of them, will be bulldozed? Good, I think, I think we need a positive response to the challenge. Thank you. Mr. Schreiber?
Good evening, I'm Aaron Schreiber with the Department of Community Planning, Housing and Development. I can answer those questions from my previous position with the county, and it's that for a variety of reasons, the county proposes to move forward with demolition of those structures. Each site is unique, and they pertain to zoning patterns, existing uses. In one case, the county doesn't own it, but it's, the nature of that use changes once the county becomes the owner. But then just the general state of those buildings, and that's mainly looking at the Buck site, the buildings that would come down, they do not present a safe and habitable use of those structures in their current state. Looking at the Carlin Springs site, that building was constructed for a specific purpose of a hotel. It does not lend itself to an adaptive reuse for any type of public use. And in fact, the daycare facility that Mr. Hughes speaks of, that's actually not even a use that the county can operate once they take title to the property, and that's just because that is an ancillary use associated with a hospital. So the moment that the hospital becomes a use that is no longer operating, the zoning of the site does not permit that. So, once again, it's a host of issues related to each site which render those buildings no longer useful. So, as the presentation alluded to, I believe the idea is to move forward with some selective demolition on the site to prepare those sites for ultimate use once the county makes those decisions.
If someone was concerned about the functions, for example, the daycare taking place in one of those buildings, who, who in the county would you approach, or...
It's not my concern.
It is, all right, I, I was trying to help, but I guess that is not helpful. So I withdraw the question, thank you anyway.
Thank you. I do a whole separate issue, but I will simply say, if our excuse for why we demo perfectly good buildings is zoning, I know why people get frustrated that I sit on the zoning committees now. On E79, you have chosen to defer, I believe, almost six years from my last CIP, the Army-Navy Country Club Emergency Access, while in your presentation you desperately search for money, money for redundant entrances to metro stations. I won't ask for staff's opinion on this, but to my fellow commissioners, I would simply say, last time we had the CIP, I brought this issue up. Two years ago, I warned each of you, as is well noted in the County Manager CIP, that the condition that the land easement that granted us this right is due to expire about one year after we plan, or about six months after we plan to build that road. I don't know about you, but I've seen very few county projects that have remained six months or a year on schedule 10 years out. So my point to my fellow colleagues is, I doubt I'm on this commission in 2028. However, this was a condition of the site plan that approved the Army-Navy Country Club addition to their clubhouse. As part of that addition, we break down a barrier that is 395 or the Shirley Madison, I believe, highway, as some people like to refer to it as. And I find that to be a bigger community asset than a redundant entrance to a metro station that already exists. For $5 million, we can break down a previously segregated neighborhood and connect it to the richest neighborhood of all of Arlington on pedestrians and bikes at the very least. So, for me, I think how we treat the least in our community is exemplified on page E79.
I think we had some emails on this when it came up earlier, forgive me, I don't remember exactly what the email said, but I do think we should perhaps get some additional information, that would be from DES, I would imagine, correct, and not just yourself, on, on the state, the condition of that, the condition, its, its length, its tenure, tenor, and what the county plans to, to do about it.
We're happy to take your question back.
Okay, would you do that, please? Appreciate that. Now look for those emails, there was an email chain on that. Anyone else? Commissioner Ward?
Hi, thanks for your presentation. I had a quick question about one of the early slides when you're talking about cost increases, and then you spoke about design-build as one of some new contracting tools, newish. I was confused if you were citing that as a cause of the cost increase, or that's your response to the cost increase, and if so, how prevalent you see that practice going forward?
The county's just started to use the design-build and the construction manager-at-risk tools, so we're still in the early stages of learning how effective those tools. So far, we're pleased and keeping our fingers crossed. But the sort of traditional manner in which we proceeded, which is to issue an RFP or issue an invitation to bid, we've definitely seen cost increases substantially above our original estimates, and that's caused us to go back and think, you know, are we, do we have as good a handle on some of these costs moving forward as we thought we did?
Anyone else? Commissioner McSweeney?
Thank you. I did want to associate myself with the comments of Commissioner Hughes. I was wondering, I think it was on Slide 12, sorry, Slide 9, where we were saying we were going to be taking down buildings on the Carlin Springs site specifically, that we couldn't find a way to reuse those buildings. It does seem, I, I hope the county will take another look at that, because it does seem within our purview to, or within our right, that the county could actually rezone them if the zoning was purely the issue. In terms of the road also, you know, I, I agree with the reasons that Commissioner Hughes stated, but there's also a practical reason, and that is that we know APS is desperately looking for sites to build more seats for students. And the Hoffman-Boston site is very much not seen as a good site because of the fact that it only has one very narrow sort of egress and ingress. That road, completing that road along the Country Club would actually assist in creating maybe some, some access. And so, it would be great, I think, if the county also could look at, at that. The last question I had, and was really just to confirm something, I'd heard over the last several years that there had been some recommendations to create an emergency management center that was somewhere other than this building, and that had been recommendations that, that the county had received many times, or perhaps was looking into. So can you just confirm that this does not include any sort of relocation of emergency management that's beyond the 10-year horizon?
The amount that I spoke of, the 9.6, 9.7 million, is really about our Network Operations Center, and where and how we provide that service. So that, that really was what we were attempting to do, we're studying that currently, and we'll have some answers once those studies are done.
But it funds the study and not the, the actual location?
What we have, and what we have funding for currently is, is funding a study. What we do not have funding for in the capital plan is the result, funding the result of that study for the Network Operations Center.
Thank you for clarifying that.
But to add to that, I want to make sure there's no confusion there. It does not include funding for a new, or a movement of the Emergency Communications Center, of the Emergency Operations Center.
Before moving on, I just want to point out that our conversation is being memorialized by Ms. O'Connell, but in addition to that, our comments stand as comments for you to take back and consider when you consider the corpus of comments that you're, you're getting from the community. Is that correct? Or should we be prepared to engage once more, perhaps as individuals, in the process going forward?
I'll let Karen speak to that, but we will incorporate what you've said. We'll take that back to the manager, take it back to the board as well, just as we do with, you know, the communications and the information we get from other advisory bodies as well.
Okay, just, yeah, please.
As Mr. Agostini said, we will take your feedback back and have it with the rest of, all of the information we've received from other commissions, and include that as part of the feedback that goes back to the board.
Very good. Thank you for clarifying that. If there are no other comments, I do have a question myself. I think it's Slide 12, if you wouldn't mind going back to... I think it's slide 12, if you wouldn't mind going back to slide 12. Deferred, Reduced, or Not Funded. You have a summary statement about the additional metro entrances. Possibly at risk due to pending regional funding decisions may require other prioritization decisions. I think that's precisely where we might find some room for discussion about what the priority should be. With respect to Crystal City itself, I think I'm seeing that on E 45 through E 48, a description of the project, and additional information about previous and new funding, especially on E 47. Given the deferred, reduced comment heading to the metro entrances, and this three-page summary of previous and current funding, can you perhaps sum up where we are with respect to that metro station at Crystal City? The reason I ask is that we've spent half the year talking about that very station in connection with a site plan, which the board will hear, I believe, in September at this point. But any additional information you have on the status of work done, is design work? Is there any additional work? What can you tell us, if anything, about that?
What I would offer is we'll take that back to Dennis Leach and the transportation folks and have them respond directly to you on that.
I think we were given some information at the CCCRC meeting, the Crystal City Group, but it would be good to stay abreast of that in light of the fact that we're probably seeing a site plan come forward in September. It would be good to have that information. So I thank you for that. Is there anything else? If not, thank you self very much. So I think we are ready for item two. Madam Clerk?
Item number two is an ordinance of vacation to vacate a portion of a street and utilities easement on the northern portion of parcel A-2, Boston Quarter, near the southwest corner of the intersection of Wilson Boulevard and North Randolph Street, known as 4238 Wilson Boulevard, Arlington, Virginia, with conditions. We have Linda Collier, our DES staff, to present this item this evening.
Good evening. Thank you.
Good evening. This is a request from the owners of Boston Quarter to vacate a small portion of a street and utilities easement that is close to the residential building. It will be used for a vestibule for the retail establishment that's adjacent to that. And it's 28 square feet, and there are no objections by staff to this request.
Very good. This is a regular item. Did, well, I like to take commissions first. Did Transportation Commission happen to hear this?
Transportation Commission heard this last Thursday at its meeting. There was a small amount of discussion. It pretty much involves about 28 square feet to allow an entrance vestibule that will encroach into the public easement, essentially the sidewalk around the building. Transportation Commission questioned involved how much of the sidewalk would be narrowed by the construction of this vestibule. And looking at the schematics that were in the documents provided to us, it looked as though the existing public easement for the sidewalk and utilities is about 11 and a half feet to the property line, and the sidewalk extends another approximately two feet to the building line. The vestibule on the vacated easement would leave about 10 and a half to 11 feet of sidewalk width to the curb face. And there also would be a canopy above, which would extend out about six and a half feet from the building itself. The Transportation Commission pretty much felt that this was not at all inconsistent with the master transportation plan, and the Transportation Commission voted seven to nothing in favor of the amendment and the vacation.
Very good. Are there any public speakers? No public speakers. Matters with the commission? Are there any questions? Commissioner Hughes?
My question to staff is, has any alternatives been considered, leasing the site or allowing a use permit instead of actually selling the land?
Because this portion is going to physically occupy the entire area, usually we will do an encroachment if something's not permanent. There's actually, I believe, encroachments underneath this area so that it would encumber the entire, you know, from heaven on down, basically, as the easements are called, so that we felt that it was appropriate to vaca, this is the type of situation where we vacate when it's going to be part of a building like this and permanently, it'll permanently be there as long as the building's there. So it's a very small area, and originally it was filed as an encroachment, and in our office, it's not our policy to do encroachments.
Very good. Any follow-up? Yes, go ahead.
Is there any thought from staff as to maintaining the lineage front there? In the sense, while it may be perpetual, in the sense, as long as the building stands in 70 years, should we wish to maintain the existing line of right-of-way, we now have a new line set in the stone, sort of, so to say, where the property owner is not us relinquishing a right, instead it's us requesting that right from the property owner?
I think all things considered, when looking at this, we thought it was an appropriate place for a vacation here because it is such a small area. So I think less than 20 feet long and less than a foot and a half wide.
I'm not necessarily in support of this at the moment, but to my colleagues, my concern to staff and my thought on this is, it's not that, it's the fact that that lineage is a continual lineage across the entire street frontage. And by abandoning our right to allow the use, we are ceding that as a negotiation.
But this is an area that's basically sidewalk, and it's a street and utilities easement, but it's being used as sidewalk. It's not where the actual street is or the curb. It's not near any of that. And it is on their property. It's an easement on their property.
For a particular purpose, for utility and?
It's a street and utilities easement, but often sidewalk is located in a street and utilities easement. There is, so the way the street is constructed there, there is an area of street and utilities easement, which is on property owned by the mall people. There's an area of fee right-of-way, sorry, this keeps going off, area of fee right-of-way in the center, and then an area of street and utilities easement that's owned by the people who own the properties, Stafford property across the street. And in this situation, this particular area is part of the sidewalk, and there is plenty of sidewalk that will be there. So staff felt that it was an appropriate place for this small vacation to occur.
Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner Schroll.
Ms. Collier, so this has nothing to affect the condition about the amount of clear width in the sidewalk that was part of the initial, correct?
As far as I, no, it does not. There's sufficient there. And that requirement still would remain.
Anyone else? Commissioner Ricks.
I see on detail, A, it's a building section, partial building section, six and a half feet for the canopy. Is the vestibule underneath also encroaching?
So the vestibule is an area that is a portion of where the canopy comes down and goes beyond the vestibule. Because the vestibule is going all the way down to the ground and actually would be an area that would be used by that retail establishment, we thought that that area where the vestibule was, was appropriate for vacation. The canopy is the subject of an encroachment, which we'll be going to the board as well. But the encroachments don't come to planning commission.
I see. So it's only the vestibule that is being vacated?
Yes.
Not the canopy, sort of?
Yes, that's correct.
Air rights, or whatever you want to call it.
Correct.
Yeah, I see.
Anyone else? Are we ready for motion? Commissioner Yakimini?
Sure. I move that the planning commission find that the proposed vacation of the northern portion of parcel A-2, Boston Quarter, near the southwest corner of the intersection of Wilson Boulevard and North Randolph Street, 4238 Wilson Boulevard, Arlington, Virginia, RPC 14-059-047, is in accord with the comprehensive plan.
Any discussion?
Thank you, Commissioner Siegel. I don't intend to support the motion, although I do support the canopy. For me, I'd be fine with an encroachment, but I do understand the rationale that staff has laid out. For me, preserving our existing lineage of lines for the future and to prosperity, or into infinity or to heaven.
Perpetuity.
Yeah, we're lacking long words now. Remains far more important than giving up that property right now. So for me, I would be comfortable with the canopy and the encroachment, but I would not be comfortable with the vacation.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, all in favor of the main motion, raise your hand. All opposed? Any abstentions? None? That's going to be nine to one, correct? We're all 10 here. Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Collier. Can we, will the clerk read the next item, please?
Item number three is a resolution to establish two new fees on the Department of Community Planning, Housing and Development's Consolidated Zoning Fee Schedule for Administrative Review Eligible Telecommunication Projects Pursuant to the Code of Virginia. We have Simon Keynes, our zoning staff, to present this item.
Good evening.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Simon Keynes, and I'm the Administrative Services Supervisor of the City of Zoning Division, and before you this evening to present our resolution. There you go. To present our resolution, describe, and to answer the commission's questions. As a matter of background, and as described in a staff report, on April 18th of this year, the Virginia General Assembly enacted new regulations that required by July 1st, 2018, a zoning administrative review process for two categories of telecommunications projects. The first relates to the installation or construction of new structures that are up to 50 feet above ground level, and the second relates to co-locating on existing structures of wireless facilities that are not small cell facilities. Zoning staff has developed a business process to implement the new regulations. And so, beginning on July 1st, 2018, customers can apply for a new permit for telecommunications projects as defined in the Code of Virginia. And as a matter of information, the new legislation will also require an amendment to the zoning ordinance that's anticipated sometime later this year to bring telecom facility requirements into alignment with the law. Zoning is asking the county board to approve the amendment to the zoning consolidated fee schedule to create two new fees for administratively reviewed telecommunications permits of $500 for each permit type. I'm available to answer your questions.
Thank you very much. I don't think we've had any commissions weigh in on this. Are there any public speakers? No public speakers. Matters with the commission? Any questions? Commissioner Guerin.
Thank you, Mr. Keynes. I have a couple of questions. How do our new fees compare with other jurisdictions? Is everybody maxing out at the $500 level?
We have received a number of phone calls from other jurisdictions, and we're actually in the lead on a number of other jurisdictions. For example, they're still developing this, and so we're not sure exactly what fees they're going to be charging. What I can say is that we felt that the fee was adequate in that for some of these types of permits, previously applicants had to apply for a special exception use permit for the board, from the board, and the fee for that was $1,800 plus. And these applications, while they don't have to go to the board, will still require quite an extensive review process.
Thank you. I have a couple more. May I?
Certainly, please. Go ahead.
With regard to the proposed language on page seven of our report, I'm wondering if we want to be a bit more precise, so that the middle red bullet point actually reads "new wireless support structures" as opposed to just "new structures"?
On page seven?
Yes. And under telecommunications, the new language that would be in the zoning ordinance?
Mm-hmm.
I wonder if we want to be a bit more precise with that language, so that it reads "new wireless support structures up to 50 feet" and not just "new structures"? I will leave that to you to consider, but when I read it, I thought, maybe we want to be very, very clear?
Absolutely. That would clarify that, so we would be amenable to making that change.
Thank you. And then my last question was, under the discussion of public engagement on page five, can you give us a sense of the comments you have received? It sounds like there was quite a bit of outreach.
Interestingly enough, we haven't received a single one. We've been quite surprised. We've anticipated that a number of questions were going to come. One of the things that we did is we drafted a very detailed email to applicants who typically apply for these kinds of projects, explaining to them what was coming. And that email went out about a week and a half ago, and interestingly enough, we have not received a single response. And so we were wondering if, in fact, the emails were received, if there was some kind of error, and there wasn't. We followed up with some of these applicants, and no response. And so we don't know what to anticipate in terms of the number of applications that we're going to get, but we haven't had any comments, one way or another, from the community.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Any questions? Let's say we're ready for a motion. Commissioner Guerin?
I move that the planning commission recommend the county board adopt the resolution attached to the staff report dated 6/18/18 to approve the amendment to the zoning fee schedule to include a new fee for small cell wireless telecommunications facilities permits effective July 15th, 2018?
Correct.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
Very good. Is there any discussion? Any further discussion? No? If not, all in favor? Very good. All opposed? None? No abstention? We're unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We are up to our fourth agenda item. Will the clerk call the item?
Okay. Can you look this up? Oh, here he comes. He's coming here.
Hello, Matt.
Item number four.
It's been heavy lifting, this one, so.
Item number four is a request to authorize advertisement of public hearings by the planning commission and county board to consider a general land use plan amendment from Service Commercial, Personal and Business Services. I just lost my place. Okay, we have Matt Matusek, our planning staff, to present this item.
Thank you very much.
This is going to be a special glove study for Columbia Pike.
Mr. Matusek. Good evening.
Good evening. I wanted to cover a number of items related to the special glove study for the property known as 2309 Street, located near Columbia Pike. Following the quick presentation, I'll end up with staff recommendation. And what you should have in front of you is the staff report, as well as a study document which captures some of the analysis that took place through the course of three LRPC meetings. In the back of the staff report attachment, one also captures some of the written correspondence that staff has received from the Penrose Civic Association and nearby residents and the church, which captures some of the comments and feedback that we've received and which are also summarized in the staff report and presentation. So starting with the background and context for this site, the site is located just a block away from Columbia Pike. It faces Ninth Street South, and is located between South Wayne and South Adams Street. It is currently improved with a seven-story office building that has two levels of above-grade parking that's exposed. Some of the street views give you a sense of the existing conditions all the way around the site. To the south of the property is a constructed alley that was part of the Sienna Park redevelopment to the south that was approved through the Form-based Code. Currently, the site has multiple access points from each side of the street. Currently, the site has multiple access points from each side of the street, Ninth Street, Wayne, and Adams, to enter and exit the two-level parking garage. The reason that we are here is because the applicant submitted a request to change the GLUP designation for this site from service commercial to low-medium residential. Since this has been a planned area through the Columbia Pike Initiative, and more recently is implemented through the commercial Form Based Code, as that site is located within the revitalization district boundaries, the 2008 policy for GLUP amendments calls for additional study to make sure that in those instances where the GLUP designation change request is inconsistent with the adopted policies, additional review takes place to make sure that that request is appropriate. So typically, what happens in those instances where the special GLUP study initiates is staff works with the long-range planning committee to evaluate and confirm the scope and schedule for the process. The objective is not to focus or comment on the specific proposal, but rather look at the land uses that are currently on the site and that are requested by the applicant, as well as others that might be appropriate based on the context of that site. The findings from this analysis, as captured by staff from LRPC, are then brought to the planning commission, as we are tonight, and ultimately the county board, for consideration of a request to advertise, which essentially sets the stage for future action concurrent with a site plan amendment, in this case, where appropriate applications of these findings and an actual project going to come together and likely include a rezoning, as would be the case in this one. To give you a broader perspective of what that looks like, the first step in this review is reaching its conclusion. We've met three times since December of last year with the LRPC. Should this continue forward and be triggered by a major site plan amendment application by the applicant, the Site Plan Review Committee would then kind of take over as early as later this year and continue the evaluation of a specific project, as well as a rezoning. That process could take several different meetings, depending on the scope and the number of issues that have been identified, and ultimately could conclude with a county board hearing of, again, the GLUP change, the rezoning, and the actual site plan amendment. So even though we're calling out certain timelines for the SPRC process, it is completely triggered by future actions by the applicant, and we have not confirmed whether or not they will be submitting, or what their timeline might be. To give you a better understanding of the existing site conditions, the site is currently governed by the CO, mixed-use district. It is surrounded by other commercial districts to the south and residential districts to the east and north. The CO district was originally approved for this site in 1968, when the existing site plan was approved for the office building. Prior to that, it was a mixture of different zoning districts, as you can see on that slide. With regards to the GLUP, the existing service commercial designation is quite popular on Columbia Pike properties, including the property to the south. However, this map gives you a better sense of the context within which the site is located, and the broad range of GLUP designations that inform staff's proposed modeling scenarios for this analysis. Specifically, there are a number of low, low-medium, and medium-residential uses, as well as medium OAH, office apartment hotel, that was part of the Penrose Square development immediately to the east, or I'm sorry, to the west, across Adams Street. Specific to the proposal that was submitted that triggered this study, the applicant is proposing to have an adaptive reuse of the existing office building. This would essentially maintain the existing structure by renovating the interior and exterior of the building and changing it from a office use to a residential use, and specifically, in this case, affordable housing. In addition, the parking structure that I mentioned earlier would be eliminated on the two sides of the street, or two sides of the site, I should say, facing Adams Street and Wayne Street, and only those portions of the site are proposed to be amended to low-medium residential, while as the portion of the site that's currently improved with the office building would maintain its service commercial designation. In terms of guidance for this site, I spoke to the commercial Form Based Code district, which was informed by the Columbia Pike Initiative, approved in 2002. Both of those documents viewed the vision for this site as a transition area from the mixed-use six-story buildings on Columbia Pike to single-family homes and townhomes located just outside the revitalization district. As such, the regulations that speak to height and use typically result in a townhouse form of development. So where you see the asterisk in the blue designation on the streets facing the site, those both call for a three-and-a-half-story height restriction in a residential use. In addition to that guidance, the Neighborhood Conservation Plan for Penrose, which was accepted in 2003, calls for a number of elements related to housing, parking, and streetscape improvements, which should be taken into consideration with any future redevelopment that takes place in this area. Following this analysis and starting in the second LRPC meeting, staff began to propose a number of different scenarios that they modeled using 3D analysis. Typical of other special studies regarding GLUP amendments, a consistent set of assumptions was applied to all different modeling scenarios. These included a range for typical size of units, ground floor heights, parking ratios, and GFAs, and in this case, starting in meeting number three, took into consideration the existing GFA of the office building, since that triggered the actual study and could be relevant to some of the analysis that took place. Specifically, staff modeled five different scenarios. Because the existing GLUP designation of service commercial is incompatible with the existing zoning designation on the site, staff took the following approach. The first scenario focused on the existing GLUP designation and matched it to an appropriate zoning designation of CO 1.0. It then, for scenario two, did the reverse by focusing on the existing zoning district of CO and matching it to an accompanying and acceptable GLUP designation of high OAH. It then, for scenario three, modeled the actual request by the applicant, which had a mixture of GLUP and zoning designations, as you saw in the earlier slide. And for scenarios four and five, focused on other designations that are either currently located surrounding the site or represent sites located further away. In this case, utilizing the medium OAH, that's next door with Penrose Square, staff felt that it was appropriate to look at low office apartment hotel. These were reviewed with LRPC during the first meeting in December of 2017 and received support to move forward. In each case, the zoning that was assigned to the GLUP designations represent the districts with highest density for modeling purposes. At the second meeting during this analysis, the first three scenarios became clearly inappropriate for that site, the first of which did not even meet the existing office building GFA, and therefore, knowing what the proposal was in front of us, that didn't really become feasible. The second designation, or the scenario focusing on the CO zoning district, resulted in much greater density on the existing site, which was just incompatible with the surrounding neighborhood. And then lastly, the application of multiple GLUP designations on one single property was inconsistent with county practices of applying the GLUP throughout the county. Although it does happen from time to time, it is a practice that we try to avoid and keep the GLUP at a general level, typically applying it throughout the entire block. So based on that feedback and other comments received in the second meeting with LRPC, staff was asked to focus on scenarios four and five for further evaluation. That further evaluation would also include some additional density beyond the 20% bonus that was modeled, and would also consider not just complete redevelopment of the site, but the context of which the existing building would remain on the property and distributing the available density throughout the rest of the site. So when focusing on just those last two scenarios, four and five, this was to break down all the different options that were modeled. There was a typical site plan, there was another one with 20% bonus, and lastly, for meeting number three, site plan with 40% bonus. Although not typical, certain cases have been identified where 40% bonus was achievable, and the committee wanted to see what that would look like on this site. Additionally, for both four and five, variations showing the existing building remaining in place with potential new density surrounding it were also identified for evaluation. Another thing that staff did with regards to those two scenarios was compare the different options to the existing GFA of the building, many of which met or exceeded the GFA that's currently on the site. In addition to the density and massing analysis, the applicant provided an initial transportation analysis that staff also evaluated with our DES staff. The area is served by multiple different bus routes, mainly on Columbia Pike, but also on Walter Reed, Sixth, and Courthouse Road. In addition, the assessment took into consideration the different typologies for the streets surrounding the site. And lastly, we evaluated the trip generation for each of the different scenarios, as well as comparing it to the existing office building. One of the more interesting outcomes of that analysis indicated that, with the exception of the CO district, which was modeled in scenario two, all other scenarios where residential uses were modeled result in much lower trip generations in the PM peak hour compared to a fully occupied office building. Currently, that office building has been partially vacant, and therefore, those effects have not been felt in the community. But should it be fully occupied, it would generate much higher trip generation values. Based on that analysis and comparing scenarios four and five to the actual proposal, and based on feedback received from LRPC, the supported scenario was for the designation change to only include low office apartment hotel. This includes a variety of uses: office, commercial, multifamily, residential, and hotel, and it wouldn't be limited to just residential uses. And it did represent a more acceptable height restriction compared to some of the other options. Some of the issues that were raised by the stakeholders attending the LRPC meetings included a number of housing and parking-related issues. There was concerns regarding affordable housing in the area, the loss of office space, and its impacts on surrounding retail. There are also street trees along South Adams Street that would be of concern, and many of these really kind of framed the guidance for subsequent review by SPRC, should an actual application come in and be reviewed in greater detail. In our staff report and the study document, we try our best to track these elements so that they kind of frame a starting point should SPRC begin on this site. Therefore, based on that analysis and feedback from LRPC and the special GLUP study, staff recommends that the county board authorize advertisement of future public hearings to consider a GLUP amendment to change the designation from service commercial to low office apartment hotel, when considered as part of an adaptive reuse proposal for the property located at 2309 Street South. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't think I see any commissions. Are there any public speakers? I'm guessing there are. We lost our clerk. Can you give me your name, please?
Maurice Spragons.
And you are with?
Pardon?
You are with?
Trinity Episcopal Church.
Yes, thank you very much.
And I, Mavis Danfield, also at Trinity Church.
Very good. Pardon me? Yes. Can you speak one at a time? I don't have, the clerk is not here to tell me.
Right. One person at a time. That's great. Whoever wants to go first. If you could just give me a second. I signed up to speak, and I just asked Maurice to come with me, in case you had questions, because he's been with the congregation many, many years. I've been with the congregation for 12, but I actually have something prepared that I'd like to read to you, if that's all right.
Please proceed, then. Thank you.
Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay. As we said, we are members, first of all, I'm so sorry that our rector couldn't be here, because she's a much better speaker than I am, but she's out of town. Our church is located at the northeast corner of Columbia Pike and Wayne Street. Ours is a very, very diverse congregation, and like all places of worship, we want our congregation to grow. As you know, our church uses the parking garage now located on the property, which is a subject of this plan change before you, for worship services on Sunday. We are very grateful to the property owners for allowing us to use this for parking, and my understanding is that this began many years ago, when Mr. B.M. Smith was a member of our congregation. In fact, as I understand it, in my brief conversations with Maurice this evening, it's been like since the 1960s that we've been using this parking. However, at this point, given the parking restrictions in the immediate neighborhood, where we might have been able to park as a congregation, we cannot now. The consequences of redevelopment to residential use on this property appear to be dire for our congregation, particularly for those worshippers who are elderly or have small children. Where will they park? We just think they will not come anymore. The development of Sienna Park immediately abutting the Ninth Street property caused many problems for the immediate community, including Trinity Church. Rather than pay for parking in the Sienna Park garage, residents began parking in the community. As some businesses struggle to take hold, there are many, very few places now for customers to park. It's just difficult to find a place. As we were leaving, we attended all of the LRPC meetings, and as we were leaving the last one, another third trustee was approached by a planning commission member who suggested that our solution was to find paid parking, which makes sense. But we are not a wealthy congregation, and this is not a viable option for us. And if it is the only option, we fear we will not survive as a congregation. I appreciate the in-depth analysis that staff has provided, and I understand that an office building is perhaps not the best use from a planning perspective for this property. We wish that we were part of the applicant's original outreach on redevelopment, which we understood started in 2015, and we didn't know about it until the application was filed in 2017. We at Trinity, which would much rather be in a position where we could enthusiastically support an amendment, but we would ask that you consider some other type of redevelopment that has a less negative impact on our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other speakers? Just one speaker?
Mr. Brighton.
Thank you.
I just want to bring you up with a little history of Trinity. Of course, it started with the Lee Custis family at the Arlington Cemetery, and from there, it went to where the Sheraton Hotel is just down the street. During the Civil War, it caught fire, and they moved there in 1955. Now, we have a day school that's wonderful, providing a lot of care for at least 60 or more children. In the evenings, when the children, afternoons, when they leave, we have parking that's tremendous, tremendously bad. We have cars that's coming out, people have to double park, and if there's construction going over there, we would have a real problem with maybe several accidents, or kids getting hit, or parents as well. Every time there has been a development there, we lose parking. There were times where we could park across the street and right beside the church. Now, we have no parking. We have, it's been changed, and we've tried to fight it several times to give us more parking, we did not get any parking. If you go further down the street, on Wayne's side, on Wayne Street, they have put permit parking. And on Sundays, and I go over there, and I have taken pictures, there's no one parking there, even though there's permit parking. Seven days a week, we don't have any parking at all. So if this goes through, Trinity probably will close, which is really bad because of just don't have parking. Ed Smith, B.M. Smith's brother, allowed us to park there since the 50s, late 50s. So I would ask you all to please consider not going through with this construction. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any further speakers? Madam Clerk? No further speakers. So let's have Commissioner Weir, who ably managed the process. Can you give us your report?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've circulated a written report, and will just make reference to that, but will cover a few highlights, trying not to repeat content that staff included in their presentation, except where I except where I think it's worth specifically highlighting. The sort of fundamental question issue in this plan is the proposed adaptive reuse of a property that is in differing, in different ways consistent with, entirely consistent with no single existing planning document that applies to this area. The LRPC, in its three meetings, which I'll discuss in a little bit more detail momentarily, struggled with, perhaps principally with, the concern that any change to the GLUP that be, to the general land use plan that is made, that might be made in connection with a site plan to be, to be proposed, would be permanent unless later changed by the Board, and that should any approved site plan fail to vest, or expire, or for whatever reason not move forward, the community would then be left with a change to the general land use plan that would permit a type of development that is not foreseen by the adaptive reuse that is included in this proposal. So the question fundamentally became, if we think that this is an adaptive reuse that should move forward, noting that it is, in many ways, more consistent with the form-based code than the current use, then how would such a change to the GLUP ensure that we are not then left with something that is completely different from, and not as appealing as the adaptive reuse that's been, that we anticipate will be proposed? Notably, this is not accompanied with a site plan proposal, although we suspect that such a proposal is forthcoming, but that disconnect sort of heightened the, in some ways heightened the urgency of thinking through this particular issue. The committee met three times in December, and February, and March. Staff presented on topics, the same topics that were presented on this evening, and the consensus sort of centered around a few main points. As staff presented, there was consensus that the, almost, we could call it almost a spot glupping of the site would not be appropriate, but that there were categories of land use plan, that there were designations of the general land use plan that could be within the realm of consideration should this other larger issue be dealt with in a way that was satisfactory towards everyone. There was also consensus then that any building not exceed the height of the current building, and that the, that the proposed, that the presented designations would only be applicable given the adaptive reuse. There was a consensus that the site should be framed by transitional townhouse-style buildings to the extent possible, to create a taper towards the communities on the east and west, and to, and to the north even for those parts of the property not currently improved by the seven-story building. There was consensus that the only scenarios worth substantial consideration were Scenario 4C and 5C, as we saw in the presentation from staff, that, but concerns were raised by the neighborhood over 5C, and the neighborhood's general belief was that the office building remains viable and that the Pike needs more office space. The neighborhood is concerned that added density and the effect of reduced office business could further undermine the area retail environment, but the neighborhood did say that it supported the idea of commercial uses that might be allowed under Scenario 5C. There were several other topics that were flagged for potential discussion at the SPRC stage. Those were itemized in the staff report. As far as suggested discussion, the most important issue is whether the modeled scenarios, specifically 4C and 5C, are within the realm of consideration for changes to the general land use plan. To the extent that either are, the commission should consider what conditions, if any, would be appropriate for future development that might be inconsistent with the adaptive reuse proposal. And there do remain a few topics where consensus is not fully developed, or where more serious discussion might be warranted during the SPRC process. This includes the potential loss of affordable commercial office space within the area, as well as, I should note, a related concern about the germaneness of that, of that question to the special GLUP study, and to the question before the planning commission, which is a change in the GLUP designation within the realm of consideration. It may also be appropriate at this time to flag any additional specific topics for further consideration by the SPRC. My proposed motion is effectively to recommend the staff motion, and if there are no other questions, that concludes my report.
So let's just, let me clarify your suggested discussion agenda. Discussion of, and perhaps, Mr. Matuzek, you could put up your final slide of recommendations with model number 4C and 5C. That's the sort of heart of what we'll be discussing, including whether there might be any conditions that would recommend to go along with that. There was a lot of discussion, I believe in the beginning, and you've mentioned it tonight, of the loss of affordable commercial space in the area, particularly with respect to loss of lunch trade, should there be a residential reuse, adaptive reuse, and not new commercial You also, I wanted to, well, that's, I wanted some clarity on GLUP Note 8, and some language in the report about the special revitalization district. I read through the report and understood that work on the Pike had sort of slowed down, and I wanted to just get an update, at least to the extent of what you, what you kind of meant by GLUP Note 8. You're recommending keeping it, but if there's additional work done on the revitalization district, that would be covered by GLUP Note 8, which simply refers to the special revitalization district. I'll ask that as a specific question right now. I just want to get the agenda items out. Parking did come up, right? And that would be another issue?
Parking did come up, but I would say that the consensus was that parking is probably a concern, but that it is up to the applicant at the SPRC stage to identify and articulate how to properly and appropriately park the site, but that is not something that is before us at the general land use plan stage.
So are you suggesting that we not discuss it at all? We have had public?
I think that we've had public comment, and I gather that there are certainly thoughts and concerns that various commissioners want to air, but, and I don't think it's, I would not recommend to the chair that it would be out of order to air those concerns.
Okay, very good.
But I might, I reiterate what I said.
I hear what you're saying, and I think we can get some clarity, and I think we should get some clarity on that through the discussion. We had trees, we had access and circulation, and street improvements and safety. That's what I have for an agenda. Do you have additional?
I wanted to support having a discussion on parking. In addition to the issues that Commissioner Weir raised about parking-related, any new development, I would like us to discuss the issues raised by the church.
Very good. I agree. Commissioner McSweeney, do you want to add something?
Yes, unless you've already mentioned it, and you may have. I'd like to discuss the NC plan and housing mix, and sort of the balance of the NC plan with any sort of GLUP action.
Commissioner Hughes?
Existing planning documents.
Okay. Okay. I think, was that not covered in the special revitalization district, or are there additional planning documents that we need to consider?
That was, existing revitalization district would be the conversation I'd like to ensure.
Okay. I had that down, but that's fine. We can call it that. Anybody else to add to the agenda? If not, let's start with any clarifying questions on the recommendation. Do we see the recommendation for 5C, 4C, and 5C? I think that's where, Commissioner Weir, that's where you want to start the conversation.
That is the, I think that that's the real nut of the issue is, I, Mr. Matuzek did not take me up on my suggestion that we call them 4CA and 4CB, and 5CA and 5CB, respectively.
Excuse me even further.
We have, Matt, can you go to the, no, the other one that shows them, towards the end of your slides, of your deck? There it is. So if you look at the third column, the C column, right, we've got, I think the real crux of the concern was that the second of the two C, 4C and 5C models, is, that's the adaptive reuse proposal, and I think that that's the one that everyone had what one of my work colleagues calls a warm fuzzy about, for better and for worse. And I think that there was a sense from everyone that the first of the four and five C options is not something that the neighborhood would want to see, right? So I think the real underlying question is, to what extent is the C options within the realm of consideration, and if so, how is it directed such that the adaptive reuse proposal is workable while retaining, while mindful of the concerns about the other options?
Well, just to put it in clearer terms, so, because I'm a bit at C now, that when you talk about adaptive reuse, you're talking about maintaining, and Mr. Matuzek, maybe you could just weigh in on this, maintaining the current building structure, changing the inside of it.
Yes.
And that any?
There's the addition of the townhouses on the side of the building, but?
Where the parking structures are now. Yes. And those are shown in 4C and 5C.
The bottom of 4C, so there are two 4Cs and two 5Cs. It's the bottom of the two.
Yes, the bottom ones, the ones that are outlined. Okay, very good. So that's where the discussion is now, and I would invite commissioners to ask clarifying questions or to make comments. Commissioner Hughes?
Thank you, Commissioner Siegel. Just a quick factual question for staff. Variations shown under 4C and 5C, are those maxed-out GFAs?
Correct.
Okay.
Sorry, with, yes, with the bonuses, that, so a maxed-out bonus is 40% bonus? No?
There were three scenarios. The first one included site plan without any additional density or bonus. The option B for each scenario had 20% additional density, maximizing bonus that way, and 20% was a number we arrived at after consulting on other site plans in the area or in the county, where 20% was an average, that we typically see people achieve, so it was fairly common. And then lastly, 40% was something that was viewed as maybe not likely, but potential, and therefore should be modeled to really develop a sense of what the maximum, ultimate maximum could be, should a range of bonus incentives and densities be achieved on that site.
But just to clarify for, because I'm sort of losing the train here, that that is a height limit of 85 feet? I believe that's what the current building is?
The current building, yes.
Is that, does that modeling conform to that height limit or not? Or is it higher, bigger?
It does.
It conforms to it?
Correct. In the scenarios that show complete redevelopment of the site, which would be the first row for Scenario 4 and 5, that density is essentially distributed throughout the property, and therefore, the building footprint is larger, and therefore, the building is not as tall.
I see. Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Commissioner Schroll, then Commissioner Morton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Matuzek, could you clarify for me, in the variation 4C, the second one, showing the townhouses on one side and nothing on the other, would the existing parking structure be able to remain in part? Would that be counted towards, it would not be counted towards GFA, or it would be counted?
To answer that, no, the parking would not count towards the GFA. And if it were only to develop, like the townhouses were to develop on one side, yeah, the existing parking structure would be able to remain on the other end. There actually is a little bit of additional GFA. It's, you can't really see it in this particular view, but there is a little GFA that would allow for some townhouses to be developed still on Wayne under 4C, the bottom one, but just not the full row.
Okay. So I think that's a helpful thing for us to consider here. It's not shown on this slide, obviously, as we discuss parking and other things about staff's proposal, 5C would not allow for that.
Thank you. Thank you for pointing that out, Commissioner Schroll. Commissioner Morton, and then Commissioner Lynn Tellme.
Hi, thanks. Just a small clarification. So when you're talking about the adaptive reuse, is that assuming adaptive reuse, or does it include the possibility of just retaining the existing building? Because I know there's some concern that, oh, couldn't it still be office? Does it mean retention of the building, or is it, would adopting this motion mean necessarily an adaptive reuse, meaning a change of use?
In theory, if you're looking at the modeling, it's really the GFA of the building, less so the actual use that's inside, but I think where our recommendation throughout the staff report and this presentation is clear, and that we are supporting low OAH designation only in the context of an adaptive reuse. And I think to an earlier point that maybe several of you were making, the revisiting of the planning documents that guide this site were added to our recommendation following the third LRPC meeting, because initially, the feedback from the group was that in addition to recommending this GLUP designation, that a new GLUP note be added just for this site, specifying the maximum height that the stakeholders were comfortable with, which would be the approximate height of the current building, so that should any future redevelopment of the entire property happen, that maximum height would not exceed what's currently on the site. Instead of taking that approach and potentially opening the door for subsequent GLUP notes that could happen on other sites, staff took a step back and evaluated the approach to the guidance that would be in place for a full redevelopment of that site. And the consensus that we reached was that we still want people to revisit the form-based code and use that as guidance, as opposed to a particular GLUP designation change. And as a result, beyond this recommendation to low OAH, staff is also suggesting that a future work plan item be identified where the form-based code is revisited just for this property, so that the recommendations and the vision in that document are more practical with respect to what's currently on the site. Because I think if you look at the townhome formal development that's prescribed in the form-based code, it essentially assumes that that would only happen if the building were to come down, and the entire site would be redeveloped. If that's not practical or unlikely, which we're seeing it's not, because the applicant is suggesting to lengthen the life of the building, then it really questions whether or not we have the appropriate vision in place for that property. And it is only one of two sites along the corridor where the form-based code results in a lower density potential than what's currently on the site. Every other site, when, once they opt into the form-based code, they are eligible for additional density. This is not one of those sites. So as a result, and instead of a potential GLUP note, the revisiting of adopted plans, in this case, would likely involve a separate analysis of just the site and the regulations that are found in the form-based code for the property.
Commissioner Lynn Tellme. Commissioner Lynn Tellme.
For the options four and 5C, both, both flavors of them. You know, one has the accommodating these existing building, the other would be if the site was scraped and something completely new goes up. They have equal square footage, equal GFA between the two scenarios?
Yes, that's correct.
Accommodating the existing, reuse of an existing building is environmentally more sustainable. You already have the carbon cost sunk into the building, you don't have to start all over again. Is there any way we could, or there should be some way to incentivize in choosing between those two sub-scenarios within each four and five, to do the adaptive reuse? Or is that just inherently cheaper to do it, so it'd be crazy not to do that?
I think it becomes a market force element with respect to comparing the cost of demolition of a building and parking structure of that size and the extent to which the interior mechanical equipment and other elements of the current building have to be improved in order to achieve the residential use that I think the applicant is considering. I have not seen the comparison of those costs, so it's kind of difficult to determine what an incentive would be to, I guess, sway somebody to go one way versus the other.
You guys, it just sort of strikes me that part of the reason we're doing this exercise is that we have an old building there that people would think, think that rather than having it torn down, it would be better to simply reuse it, but it doesn't fit the existing GLUP or zoning really. So we're going through this. But if the end result is that everything gets torn down anyway, why were we doing this?
I think it represents a alternative interim vision, as we're calling it, where since one of the key assumptions in the Form-Based Code was for the building to be demolished at some point, if that reality is being extended through an adaptive reuse, then we should have a process to determine something appropriate in the interim, but at the same time revisit the ultimate vision that is in the Form-Based Code and make sure that when the time comes and the developer is looking to redevelop the site holistically, they can still look at the Form-Based Code and have a practical solution that I think still provides an incentive.
Which means the greater density, unlike now where you would end up having less density if you scraped the site.
Correct. And in that case, one of the things that we've identified in the staff report would be that the maximum height, for example, for that property, which would be potentially 85 feet, which is the height of the current building, that wouldn't be a height that's applied throughout the entire property, but more so for the center of the block. And we would want to likely mimic some of the natural step backs that are currently on the site by the, created by the parking structure and potentially even, you know, townhomes should this go forward. And that way, I think that's much more sensitive to the neighbors on either side of the property.
Thank you.
Anyone, Commissioner Hughes?
Could you point me to the GLUP modeling that shows the existing Form-Based Code condition?
That was not modeled as part of this exercise.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Commissioner Rix?
For the existing office building, I'm assuming there's no underground parking, it's just this surface parking structure?
The two levels are mostly above grade, but there is a partial level that's considered below grade.
So my question would be for the scenario where the existing building is, is repurposed and one side is redeveloped with townhouses or both sides. How, how is the parking requirement met?
For the, let me start with the full redevelopment that's represented in the top rows for each scenario. That automatically assumes underground parking when the site would be completely cleaned. However, with the two variations where the existing building would remain, the expectation would be that a large portion of that parking deck would remain in place and any additional density that's being introduced would have to solve their parking requirements on site.
On the issue of the 4C, 5C, Commissioner Weir?
I think, just to follow up on what Mr. Matusyak just said, I think that the point is that the issue here is, is the land use, is the change to the general land use plan within the realm of consideration, right? And that, that while we may be skeptical about whether that can be pulled off while meeting the parking requirements, the, the parking, the ability to meet the parking requirements is a question for the next stage of the process, for the SPRC process. We almost have to sort of suspend our, for lack of a better phrase, we almost have to suspend our disbelief and assume that the applicant will be able, that the property owner will be able to, to find a way to make it work at this stage. If they can't make it work, that's, that's really an issue for the next stage. The parking is not part of the general land use plan.
When we get to that item, and I'm glad you raised it in connection with the, the models, because we are, you do consider these things holistically and, and we've had public testimony. But when we get to the parking part of the agenda, I'd like some more information, how many parking spaces there are now, what are the needs, et cetera? But we'll, we'll get to that in the order that we set out the agenda. Any other issue? Commissioner McSweeney?
I don't know if it falls under this, but I just have a general thing I wanted to just make sure we, that I was clear on. So the recommendation is actually to move forward though with advertising 5C, correct? And I guess what I'm wondering is, if you move forward with that, well, first of all, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. If we move forward with just one of these, which that one is the office apartment hotel, it does seem we sort of, you know, limit the options that the applicant might have in terms of being able to adequately park or even, you know, cut a deal or, you know, create some additional parking for the church or something. And so I guess I'm, I'm just wondering why we wouldn't move forward in advertising both the residential GLUP and also the office apartment hotel GLUP? Because it seems it leaves us additional flexibility. Is there, is there a reason?
I'll, I'll cover one and I'll just explain another. One of the things that was also identified is the potential likelihood of the applicant for a number of reasons, but let's just call, say financing being one of them, not being able to actually construct the building, the actual project that's in front of us. But they have taken as far as completing the SPRC process, amending the GLUP, completing a rezoning and the site plan amendment, for example, just maybe after that fact, for whatever reason, financing wasn't available. In that event, we would be, for better or worse, stuck with a medium residential designation, but within that office building continuing into the future. So that's something I think that was one of the elements which guided the discussion away from that designation, but to a more flexible one that has multiple uses identified, hotel, residential and office, so that regardless if this actually moves forward, the designation would not create a nonconformity on that site.
Commissioner Weir?
Am I correct though that, just to follow up on Commissioner McSweeney's question, if the GLUP were to be amended per, to designate it as, as low OAH, that would not preclude a site plan proposing modeling that looks like what we're seeing in the 4C part, correct? They, the, the property owner could, under a, a low OAH designation, could still propose to, to, to renovate the existing office building and only develop, only build townhouses on one side of the building, right?
Correct. That, really what it becomes an issue with regards to parking is a question that has to be solved as part of the SPRC process where the applicant would have to demonstrate the way in which they're satisfying the minimum parking requirements on that site with the existing and any potential new density that's being introduced. So that equation of how much can you add and still meet the parking demand for on that property, I think is a question that SPRC has to solve and the applicant has to demonstrate. It wasn't a specific driver in terms of this analysis, which focused on land uses and massing, that is something that the applicant has to demonstrate in the next process.
I just want to repeat the question so that I'm sure I understand the answer. And that is namely that in recommending 5C, scenario 5C, a, a site plan applicant doesn't have to build it out entirely as shown. They can go short and might have to, what you're suggesting, because of parking issues. Because you can't, they can't dig underneath and put the parking there.
It would be very difficult to add parking on that site, but another factor to consider is the fact that this is modeling a 40% additional density to a site plan, which again would have to rely on a combination of affordable housing, lead and other potential incentives, which at a 40% are fairly difficult to achieve on a small site like this. So again, this was intended to model kind of a, you know, worst case scenario in terms of density potential. What is the absolute maximum somebody could potentially yield, given the combination of GLUP and zoning designations?
Thank you for that. Commissioner Hughes and anyone else?
I had a follow up.
Commissioner McSweeney?
Quick factual question only, Mr. Matusyak, because you mentioned it, the other site in the Form-Based Code area plans that allow, that's currently built higher than the existing density, I believe I know it. You want me to go first or you want to go first?
I like the quiz, go ahead.
You go first.
AT&T building?
Actually, it was the ECDC building.
ECDC, next door, okay.
You lose.
I think the AT&T is too.
Okay. Commissioner McSweeney?
I apologize for, I don't really mean to drive this into the ground, I just want to make sure that I understand the quest, the answer you gave Commissioner Schroll a few minutes ago. My, my understanding was Commissioner Schroll was asking if you could retain the parking on the left-hand side of 4C and it would not be able to retain, be retained under 5C. Is that, is that true or does anything stop you from retaining the parking on the left side under 5C as well? I guess the issue was you couldn't necessarily put as many townhouses under 4C.
I think the best way to capture what these models are showing is that should you be able to accommodate the parking, you could add this much density to the site. It doesn't say that it's a given and that these will come at the expense of parking. These could be townhomes with interior garages. We're not sure, and this is not, that wasn't part of the scope, I guess, for this process. But it does say that this much density is permitted, should you be able to park that on site?
Okay, I think I misunderstood the answer you gave earlier and I was, I thought you were saying that you couldn't retain under 5, under scenario 5C, you wouldn't have any option to retain the parking that's currently there. But that is, is not what you said. Thank you.
I want to continue with the, the parking issue and if you have additional questions about the scenarios, please feel free to address them. Commissioner Guerin?
Yes, because I'm not sure when we will actually have this discussion, I, I want to make sure I, I say this. When we started this process and we talked about changing the general land use plan designation, we received some information that it seemed appropriate to change the use of the building to residential because there wasn't a lot of demand for office space. And at that point, I was very uncomfortable because I feel this is a very big decision we're making, it's not associated with the site plan, we make that change and it goes forward, that we didn't have more objective information documenting that there is not a lot of demand for office space. We've heard anecdotally from a couple of different sources that in fact there is demand for affordable office space on the Pike. So for me, looking at these, the only one I would be able to support would be 5 because it retains the option for office space. So I just want to, I want to be really clear about that here. I know we're spending a lot of time looking at the two different ones, but the one that gives us the most options going forward is in fact 5.
Anyone else? Commissioner Rix?
For the existing building now, what is the approximate vacancy or occupancy rate?
I believe it was 30% vacant?
30% vacant.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Commissioner Guerin?
If that comment leads some of us to believe that that means that there is an excess of affordable office space, I want to show that I know CPRO is looking for office space along the Pike. So they, while unfortunate that they're not here tonight, this is something that, you know, to our local group, the closest thing we have to a bid in that area, this is an issue about which they know a lot and they feel strongly. So I guess I'm representing them in their...
Commissioner Hughes?
I want to echo Commissioner Guerin. One of the challenges on the Pike is the, the tendency for a wonderful evening business crowd and a great breakfast crowd for those of you who enjoy Bob and Edith's. However, the significant trough that exists during the lunchtime hour, and it can't go unsaid, CPRO for years has been complaining because the business owners all along the Pike complain that not enough of us work from home to go shopping at Attila's every lunch hour to make up for the fact that, you know, that's a low time for them. So it does give me a great deal of discomfort to know that we are losing a, a, an existing office building that is affordable, all at the expense of violating the Form-Based Code.
It's not entirely clear that we are losing the building. There are many, many steps to go and I think if Trinity Church would also keep that in mind, this can be a very abstract exercise and we've struggled with it. And as you can see, the planning commission is concerned about parking. I would just ask, how many parking spaces are available currently?
I don't have that number available.
You don't have the number. Could I ask Trinity Church, how many spaces do you need and when do you need them?
Primarily Saturdays.
Can you come to the podium?
Sure, sure. Is it okay? Is it okay? Is it okay? Primarily Saturdays and Sundays and special holidays, Christmas, Easter. On Saturdays, we have a congregation that meets in there with 150 people and it fills the parking lot, top and bottom.
Okay, on Saturdays.
Saturdays.
Okay. I, I think that's very important for us to get the parameters of that requirement as a planning commissioner. I just need to have that information. I know we're not, I know that's sort of tangential to what we're doing tonight, but we have had public testimony and I want to make sure that Trinity Church understands we've, we've heard that. Commissioner Yakimini, did you, did you want to say something?
Actually, I, I had, but I was confused what topic we were on. We seemed to have segued among some, some things and so it was unclear to me.
What would you like to talk about?
I was going to ask Mr. Matusyak to clarify for us what this site is called for under the Form-Based Code.
The entire site is designated as local frontage in the commercial Form-Based Code that require, regulates a three and a half story height restriction and residential uses, the combination of which typically results in a townhouse form of development.
Okay, so this whole notion about the office building retention, is that a topic we were, were on?
Yes, yes.
Oh, okay.
It's adaptive reuse, I assume when you talk about adaptive reuse, you're talking about the existing structure, which is an office building currently.
Right, so even in the adapt, in the adopted plan that covers this particular block, the retention of the office building was not contemplated. So for us to talk about, oh my gosh, we're sorry that we're losing an office building is outside of what's even in the adopted plan. And as Commissioner Guerin has pointed out to me, actually going with option 5, which is low office apartment hotel, there's, that is actually more of a statement about office building. Now granted, the motion that, and the staff recommendation ties that to adaptive reuse of the current building, which means changing it from office to residential. But still, you know, it does, 5 does encompass some of the concerns about the office building, right? And, and I think the staff report went on to say that CPRO, that there is a study that is being undertaken about the balance of office and residential as currently called for in both the Form-Based Codes that cover the Pike, is that correct, Mr. Matusyak?
Correct, and it's anticipated to be complete in the fall of this year.
Right. And lastly, for good or bad, the, there is an owner of this building and they will decide on an economic basis what they're going to do with it. So while we may think that it's good to retain it as an office building, if it is not, they do not find it financially... do not find it financially viable, and there are not incentives in place to encourage that, nor are there specific guidances in the Form-Based Code. We have in the Clarendon Sector Plan where we've actually called out the percentages of office and residential on various blocks, if I'm not mistaken, because of this concern about the office and residential balance, we don't have any of that. So while it's an interesting discussion, it's all about what the owner wants.
Mr. Matusek, did you want to respond or clarify?
Just comment. It's not really a response. But one, I think, helpful way of framing this action associated with the request to advertise is really a question of, is office use the only use that's compatible and appropriate for this location? That's all we're asking. And when we speak about the office use that's currently there and impacts of, should it go away, be replaced with hotel or residential uses, I don't think it's as black and white of an issue as I think many have framed it in that while the, you know, lunchtime business activity would be lowered, should the office use be replaced with residential, there would also be a gain in the evenings and weekends activity that the businesses could also appreciate and benefit from. So again, it's kind of what is the true consequence of that action. Additionally, with regards to traffic, if the building were to be completely occupied, the community would significantly feel much bigger traffic impacts from that use had it been a residential use that we've modeled, which results much lower trip generations. And then lastly, many have considered this a Class C office space, and any kind of improvements, which the building is in need of, would likely displace many of the tenants that are currently there because it would no longer be affordable, quote unquote, once those renovations are implemented.
Friends would have to be raised.
Correct.
That's what you're saying. I just want to underscore, yes, absolutely. Our, obviously, economic market forces will create demand. But our job is to create models that permit whatever those forces might, might be. And we don't know. We do have one indication of a market force from the applicant for this GLUP change, but given all of the competing factors, and it's been a confusing GLUP study, even though it's kind of small, smaller than what we've, we've done, it has been very confusing and like a Rubik's Cube. And if you change this, this way, then what happens to that? And I do think that allowing low office apartment hotel does do, do just that. It doesn't dictate what the market will, will bring us. We don't, we don't know that. But it allows the market to bring us different options. Commissioner Weir?
Just to respond a little bit, Commissioner Gurein, to a point that you made about Cipro not being here. Cipro was not asked to be part of the study. That was a decision that I made as the chair in consultation with, of course, the Chair of the LRPC. And it's in part because of sort of how we do these special GLUP studies, is that it's a smaller table, right? But I do want to point out that should a site plan proposal come forward, right, of course, our protocols for SPRC projects include BIDs specifically exemplifying Cipro as the kind of organization that is by right at the table, right? So an SPRC process would necessarily include Cipro and potentially include any other stakeholders at the discretion of the Chair, perhaps even the Church or other items. But they would be part of the process going forward should an SPRC plan be presented.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. I think we really do need to focus on that sort of two-step process here. I wanted to just, excuse me? I just wanted to get, if I could, the study that you referred to two comments ago, was this, was a study initiated in 2005, I think? Is that correct? Or what's, if not, what study are you referring to?
This is a study that Economic Development is conducting through the course of this year and involves a number of interviews.
And was begun this year, not earlier? Because I've, in the re-
I think due to funding and third-party assistance that county staff received, the initial part of that study involved interviews with business owners throughout the Columbia Pike Corridor. That information and market analysis are being conducted as we speak. And in the fall, recommendations for specifically the Columbia Pike Corridor and the commercial entities that are there are going to be prepared and reviewed publicly.
And you will alert this commission to when this study is available. I think we'll, we'll be interested in, sometimes in the rush of all kinds of information, we may, may miss it. But I think we would like to see it, given the concern we've had about affordable office space. It doesn't have to be here, obviously. It can be other points of the Pike, on the Pike. And it's, I think, good to, to look broadly at the Pike to see what the opportunities and constraints are there. Okay. So I think we've, we've covered the, the two modeling questions and parking. Did you want to talk about existing planning? I think that's appropriate now.
Sure. I have a quick question for staff. Normally, we begin these special GLUP studies, if I remember them correctly, with a review of any existing planning documents that are, that are there. In this case, we have not presented even the model of what the Form-Based Code would have required on this site, which was the existing governing document that took the community a decade to prepare and acknowledge that was there. What was staff's thinking there?
I think the vision that is prescribed in the Form-Based Code was applied in several different ways, even though it's not reflected in the modeling scenarios. It wasn't just that the Form-Based Code calls for a certain height and use on that property. It also calls for streetscape improvements, framing the three streets that frame, that surround the property, creating enough parking on the site, all of which are elements that we would expect to see should SPRC take over and review a specific site proposal for this adaptive reuse. So there would be elements of that vision that would make their way into the next process. However, the height and use, I think we've identified as something that needs to be revisited because the current vision that's for that property in the code is essentially impractical, understanding that the office building today is so much greater in density than what the townhomes would yield on that property, that it's very unlikely somebody would actually forego that density and opt into the Form-Based Code.
Okay. Please.
I'm sort of reflecting over the past several years. I can think of the 11th in Vermont, which was an existing planning document to frame and finish building, in which case out the blocks of Boston, in which case a developer came in and requested more density, I believe, on that subject site. And we chose to limit height and density. I'm then reminded of, but the board didn't. I'm just reminding my fellow colleagues of what they have said in the past with respect to special GLUP studies that we have seen that come before us. And, and I'm also thinking here of 11th in Vermont was my final one, but, oh, Kirkwood. How could I forget our Washington Kirkwood year-long special GLUP study, mini, small area plan site. And there, I believe, I remember tireless nights with respect to staff justifying, I think we got up to five stories fronting the townhomes? And higher in the middle. That's great. So my question to staff is, how far away is this site from a metro?
I would say at least a mile and a half. I think Pentagon City might be the closest. I have to double-check for that.
And I believe, let me correct if me understand it, the proposed density under this special GLUP study would allow a 10-story building? Is that correct?
For a site, site of this size, correct.
I find that number just ironic to myself, given the fact I believe at our Washington Kirkwood study, I suggested allowing the possibility of a 10-story building on an affordable housing building that was a, at least what, I think about a quarter to a third of a mile away from a metro. But it was considered not necessarily positive by staff. My concern here remains the same. We are judged by how we treat the least amongst us, and I concern myself frequently with our inconsistent approach to how we approach sites.
Does staff have a, a response? Do you find that, that, that it's inconsistent? I, I don't know that you were, you are not involved in the-
No, but I can give my two cents, I guess.
Please.
The nature of this study is such that it's much more unique than previous GLUP studies from a perspective that it was triggered by a proposal for an adaptive reuse, which we have not experienced before. And it was only in the context of that application that I think we've come around in support of that GLUP designation change. Because ultimately, should the entire site redevelop, we still want to reference the Form-Based Code, and it's hopefully updated vision following this study to make sure that the redevelopment matches the community's vision for that property and the outcome of this study. So the, absence of those elements, I think it's very difficult to compare GLUP studies to each other.
Because we have an existing seven-story, 85-foot-tall building.
That the applicant has signaled it will remain much longer into the future than we have anticipated.
And that, that was unanticipated.
Correct.
As the presumptions, as the assumptions going into creating the vision in the first place.
And I think with respect to the 10-story restriction or maximum potential for a site that's far away from any metro stops, again, what we're emphasizing in the report and in the study document in that the designation change is essentially, our support is conditional of that adaptive repurposing of the building as opposed to it being used long-term for a full redevelopment of the site.
Okay. Very good. Let me, let me see if I can get a factual, quick follow-up. Sure.
So staff's intentions are, as I understand it then, you come forward, should this be approved by the board as an advertisement to possibly amend this GLUP, that you would come forward should a site plan be submitted by an applicant with a site plan, a GLUP amendment, and a Form-Based Code amendment?
Staff would administer the Form-Based Code amendment separately and outside of that process.
Factual follow-up. Again, is it prior to or after?
Likely prior to.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Weir?
Just to respond, Commissioner Hughes, to you, I think that, you know, I, I believe that I also supported and would have supported more density than we recommended at 11th in Vermont, as well as Kirkwood. And if I hear you saying, forgive me for perhaps putting this just charitably, if I, if I hear you saying, Commissioner Hughes, that we were mistaken before there and so should be mistaken here as well, you know, I, I will be a voice of consistency in that I called for adding to the housing supply there, and I think that we should not miss the opportunity to add to the housing supply here. I'll even further burnish my vote of fides. The Staples Site isn't before us tonight, but had it been before us tonight, I would have said that to the extent that there's tension between the adopted sector plan and the idea that we can only have two or three stories a tenth of a mile from metro, the, the problem is with the sector plan and not with the idea that we can only have two or three stories a tenth of a mile from metro. So I would, I would, I would implore any of my fellow commissioners who are thinking that for consistency's sake, we should miss the opportunity to add to the housing supply here, to not think that.
Thank you very much. Anyone else on existing documents? We can move-
Well-
Commissioner Gurein?
I did want to finish up the parking.
Yes, please. We, absolutely, no, that's fine.
Commissioner McSweeney has something right now on this.
Well, one of the, I guess, accepted policies is the NC plan. And I did want to, but maybe we should finish up with the parking and then talk about NC and the balance? Okay.
That's fine. Do you want to finish up the parking?
Yes. With regard to the parking, I want to raise an issue and see if we have any other ways to address it. I know that we like to retain our local churches, small businesses, and so on. And to the extent that this church seems to have an issue with parking that's pretty specific in time, is there anything that staff can do to help them find existing parking in the area that they might not already know? Is there a way to change that permit parking to exclude Sundays? Is there a way to facilitate some sort of agreement with the parking structure underneath the Giant? I, I hate when we go down this path of saying we need more parking and then we build more parking because a lot of our parking isn't used all the time. And I do want to follow up on the issue they raised because I think we're going to see it with other, with other projects where maybe there's a solution that we can't see up here and that you guys, I know that's not your expertise, but maybe there's someone on staff who's really good at looking through that and if it's an issue of changing the permit parking or something else to address their parking at a specific time. And I'll throw this out to my fellow commissioners, too. Nancy, you look confused.
I, I don't mean to look confused. I was clicking through my mind, thinking that churches are and could be considered small business and that we do not, we have an AED Small Business Ombudsman. And Shannon Flanagan Watson used to have that role, and I'm sure somebody else does in AED, and that is somebody who can facilitate questions. And I think shared parking would be one of them. And perhaps there are resources for the, and I think that Mr. Schreiber turned around and spoke with the church folks, that I think we might have some resources that you could go to because not, not changing the GLUP is not going to solve your parking problem. Not, you know, hoping this building lasts forever isn't a solution because the building won't last forever. But trying to find more parking opportunities, as Commissioner Gurein suggested, is, is looking to the future and not to the past. And, and I say this as somebody who, who goes to St. Mary's, that's up by Merrymount, and we have a very small parking lot, and we have a very large congregation. And so we have to use the parking at two nearby medical buildings in Merrymount. Those two buildings could redevelop. One's an old school and one's an orthopedic clinic, and they could be gone. Merrymount, I don't think, may add some buildings, but I think their parking garage will be there. But that's across the street and it's, and it's a walk. So everybody is struggling with that, and particularly churches. And I, but I do think that the good news is actually you are located in a place where there are garages. Those of us that are in more of the single-family neighborhoods really will have an issue when it comes time and we see redevelopment around us. So please see if you can, and staff can help do as Commissioner Gurein suggested and start looking at a plan.
Thank you, Commissioner Yakimini, for helping articulate that. And staff, can I ask, do we need to make a motion or is this something that you can just facilitate?
We can certainly facilitate, absent a motion.
And it will be memorialized in, in our minutes, and the, the board reads every word of our, of our discussion. Commissioner Morton?
Yeah, I'd just like to add my voice to the other commissioners speaking because, you know, I keep reading more and more about this idea that, you know, the future of parking really needs to be thinking more flexibly. I mean, people, we may not be using cars as much as other shared mobility, autonomous vehicles. I've seen analysis showing parts of the county are really overparked, even though everyone's struggling for parking. And I just like to add my voice to that consideration of, of other kinds of flexible uses and not this concept of a static parking law to serve needs in perpetuity when we're thinking about the future.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else would change the subject to NC and housing mix? Commissioner McSweeney?
Thank you. And I just, I thought it was worth bringing it up as a, as a conversation point because the neighborhood has certainly brought it up. And I don't know, you're probably looking for the slide right now, Mr. Matusek, that showed the NC plan guidance that talked about the balance of homeownership versus rental. And there was some concern expressed that in their plan, Penrose had, had been looking for more homeownership opportunities versus, versus rental. And so I guess I just, you know, I often struggle with this when, when a neighborhood has actually put forward an NC plan that the board has accepted, that, that says specific things like this. And then there's, there is a development, a potential, I'm sorry, a potential development that might come in and, and do something a little bit different. At the same time, I know it doesn't really necessarily fall right under it, but, you know, the Columbia Pike Neighborhoods Plan does look to put a lot more affordable housing to replace the market rate that they're, they're losing. And it was a one-for-one, you know, match or, or that was actually envisioned. And this certainly would go toward doing that as well. And so when you talk about balancing documents, you know, and balancing the conversation-
And so when you talk about balancing documents, you know, and balancing past conversations, I think it's important to look at all of those. And also, there was a comment made by the community as well, I thought, in one of the letters about there's too much affordable housing here, and I just wanted to also ask, I don't really think there is a lot of committed affordable housing. I think it's market rate in this area. Is there committed affordable housing right within this area?
I'm not aware of any committed affordable. Most of the market rate affordable is located in the Filmore Gardens complex, which is located along Walter Reed and occupies approximately three blocks. It's a very significant complex. I think in this issue, the challenge for you all in the county board is that the Form-Based Code and the Columbia Pike Initiative represent adopted policy versus this is accepted guidance that should be considered when making decisions on redevelopment, but they don't supersede the adopted policy. And in this case, you can see by the timing, this was accepted in 2003. Two years later, Sienna Park was approved, and another year later, Penrose Square was approved, well within that neighborhood, adding to the rental component of that, you know, housing mix. I think in this case, you know, the glasses-half-full approach would also highlight the fact that the applicant has signaled that they're not only looking to do senior living as opposed to typical affordable housing, but the townhomes would be for sale framing the existing building, which again will kind of help, I think, distribute the mix between rental and ownership.
Thank you. So, again, I'd be interested in also my fellow commissioners because it is something I think we struggle with a little bit.
Commissioner Geren. And then Commissioner Yakimini.
I also thought of that, so thank you for raising that, Commissioner McSweeney. Do you feel that either scenario gives us enough flexibility to go forward recognizing that? Or does this make you lean more towards one rather than another? Was that when it comes to the...
Well, it wouldn't only be this topic that swayed me in one direction or another. It would be sort of the whole of our conversation. And if you're asking, I mean, I think I'm fine with the 5C that's being...
Or is it something we wanted to include in our discussion so that it's clear when it goes to SPRC that we would want it to recognize, although it sounds like the applicant is already going in that direction, the homeownership desire from the NC plan?
I certainly think it's something we should mention.
The NC plan would be considered along with the other documents or not?
It would be considered as part of the SPRC process.
As part of the SPRC. And let me clarify, as would be street improvements, trees, things like that, I don't know that that's really something that we need discussed tonight, correct?
As part of the special GLUP study, no.
That not as part of the special GLUP study. So, I'd like to move the conversation along. Are there any other comments on any other topic? I don't want to shortcut anyone's comments. No. In that case, I think we're ready for a motion. Commissioner Weaver?
I move, then, that the Planning Commission recommend that the county board adopt the resolution attached to the staff report to authorize advertisements of public hearings to consider a general land use plan amendment from service commercial to low office apartment hotel in conjunction with an adaptive reuse proposal for the property known as 2300 South 9th Street for dates concurrent with the consideration of a rezoning and associated site plan amendment application.
Is there a second? Commissioner Lynn, tell me seconds. Any further discussion? Commissioner Hughes?
Commissioner Siegel, first of all, I want to thank Mr. Matusek for staff for wonderful presentation and Commissioner Weir for chairing the LRPC. I've struggled with the site for a long time. For me, what it comes down to is consistency with the Form-Based Code. And while Penrose, of course, was developed outside this Form-Based Code and done through the SPRC process, for all intents and purposes, it complied with the Form-Based Code. For me, the form, the massing, the vision of the Pike with respect to how the Form-Based Code laid it out, the fact that, yes, Commissioner Yakimini is correct, the site will not continue as an office building indefinitely. It will not be a BM Smith free parking perpetuity. There must be a solution, and the community has a lot of solutions. I like some of the things I heard this evening about abandoning street parking during service hours or an exception perhaps, and that might be something that comes out of the parking study that's currently ongoing by staff. But for me, when I think about the site and I think about all the other sites that are contained within the Form-Based Code, adherence to the Form-Based Code remains my paramount and strident goal. The site will not continue as an office building, that is correct, and it would be developed into residential's, increasing our housing stock. For me, that is the paramount goal, and I have yet to find out or to truly understand staff's logic. It seems to miss me with respect to why we approve double density here versus without conditioning the adapter for use, although I am glad to hear the Form-Based Code study will come first and then we'll get an SPRC with an associated GLUP study. So, for me, I will not be supporting the proposal.
Very good. Anybody else?
Although I may, I reserve my right to support the actual SPRC when the time comes. But when it comes to the GLUP amendment with respect to the site, it is a function of adherence to the Form-Based Code.
Strictly speaking, is what you're saying.
Can I just clarify one thing? I'm sorry.
Please.
The timing of the Form-Based Code analysis is going to be pending our work plan, so that hasn't been assessed yet. I don't want to overpromise something, and we don't know exactly when the SPRC could begin because it's completely up to the applicant. But however, it is something on our radar that is a priority compared to some of the other items that are not as significant.
My hope is that when the time comes, we'd find the necessary resources.
Thank you for expressing that hope. Anyone else? Commissioner Weir?
Just to respond to you, Commissioner Hughes, I do hope that you reconsider, especially both tonight and when the SPRC process is in motion. It's my understanding that the Form-Based Code is opt-in and that a property owner can decide, rather than being beholden to the Form-Based Code, to be beholden to the GLUP and the ZO instead. But beyond that, Commissioner Hughes, I would just point out that what the Form-Based Code calls for is a residential use. It calls for a certain density of residential use, to be sure, but I would hope that you would just consider that this proposal holistically gets us closer to the spirit of what the Form-Based Code calls for with respect to that property than the current use, as well as what would probably be the use going forward should this proposal not move forward. So, I guess I would just ask you to be mindful of that, if not tonight, then perhaps during the SPRC process.
Anyone else want to make a comment? Let me see. This is a wonderful exchange, but let me just make sure nobody else has a comment. If not, carry on.
Thank you, Commissioner Weir. I do sincerely appreciate those comments, and I do understand what motivates them for me. And the opt-in, opt-out process is one of the things that strongly motivates me for strict adherence to the Form-Based Code. The Penrose site is an exception to the rule, and I like to keep those exceptions to the rules continuing to be very far and few between, and two in a decade is almost too many because I do see this as a visioning document to go forward. The reality is, the reason this building exists, for those of us on the commission who do not know and who are new, is because metro undergrounding was supposed to go down Columbia Pike to the Skyline Mall complex, which is why Skyline is as tall as it is. And those visioning documents at the time, which you said the building was envisioned in 1968, correct? Would have had master transportation plans noting an additional metro line down Columbia Pike, just like we today see an additional metro station at Roslyn. We've abandoned any hope for a metro line down Columbia Pike, but there is still hope for Roslyn. So, I appreciate my fellow commissioners, but for me tonight, I believe I know where I am.
I would just say, I appreciate this conversation because I think it isn't immediately clear to me, or I think to other citizens in Arlington, how our documents work together. And that's one of the challenges of the Planning Commission. We have 11 elements, for example, in the comprehensive plan. We're only really dealing with one of them tonight mostly, and that is, to me, more of an art than a science. And it also seems to me it's extremely place-based. So, I personally, while I welcome Commissioner Hughes's perspectives and passion about our planning documents, I don't personally see a contradiction. So, I also did want to thank Mr. Matusek and Commissioner Weir for a great job, a lot of effort, and really a lot of complexity that I think I finally have gotten my arms around and understand. Does anybody else want to make a comment? No amendments? Let's just vote, then. So, all in favor of the motion as stated? Oh, do you have a question, Commissioner Weir?
Yeah, I'm just trying to find the language that qualifies the maximum height to be 85 feet versus the over 100 feet that's allowed by OAH.
I think it might be the corresponding zoning.
Were you just looking for a maximum height or...
A number.
Did I clarify on this to the question correctly?
I guess I'm asking the commission here, are we comfortable or do we need to add some kind of qualifying language on height?
I suspect, Commissioner Ricks, that by the motion tying this to adaptive reuse of the existing building, it essentially has it at 85 feet. This is not a blanket change to OAH. This says the board will advertise in conjunction with a site plan that entertains adaptive reuse of the existing building.
So, adding stories on top would not be an option?
No.
Commissioner Weir?
Thank you, Commissioner Yakimini, and I perhaps should have made this point more finely in my report. The conditionality language basically says that if the adaptive reuse proposal were to go away, then, yes, while the GLUP change might go forward, any evaluation of any site plan would point squarely at the Form-Based Code and other planning documents that would still control and limit. Yeah, I mean, you're not, I think that I'm fairly comfortable in saying that absent an adaptive reuse proposal, there's, you know, no combination of people in the county that you could put on the table for an SPRC that would make a recommendation that something, you know, 10 stories tall go forward.
Okay. I think we're ready for a vote. All in favor of the main motion as stated? All opposed? Any abstention? So, we've got eight, one, two, one. Very good. Thank you very much. We're ready for our organizational matters and other business portion of, and I think we can probably get through this quickly. We have the approval of the June 4, 2018 meeting minutes. Would anybody like to make a motion? Thank you.
I move adoption of the June 4, 2018 meeting minutes of the Arlington County Planning Commission.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Geren. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? One, two, three. Have you got it, Ms. O'Connell? Very good, okay. So, do we have staff report on current matters?
We do not, but I hope you guys have a great recess.
Thank you very much. Committee reports. Site Plan Review Committee, I guess that's me. I think we're all signed up. Commissioner McSweeney and I will be meeting on, it's Friday, correct? At 4 o'clock? Friday at 4 o'clock. We worked on that very hard and we found a meeting time. Long Range Planning Committee, Commissioner Yakimini?
We will have a meeting in late July on implementation of four-mile run valley.
Very good. Thank you very much. Zoko?
We will have a meeting on July 24, and we will continue our discussions on the one and two-family dwellings, non-conforming issues.
We're being very succinct tonight. PFRC, Commissioner Schroll?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The School Board will hear Reed School as an info item on July 17. They'll have action later, I believe, later in July. The use permit will come to the PFRC and BLPC in September, and we will also be kicking off the Ed Center PFRC/BLPC in the September timeframe as well.
You are very busy. Form-Based Code Advisory Working Group?
Like last time I spoke, I would defer to Commissioner McSweeney if she wished to provide the update.
That was tongue-in-cheek.
I see. Very good.
Since I'm using his resources right now for the Career Center Working Group.
Oh, I see, I see. Okay. Thank you, thank you very much. I really don't have anything to report on now, except you do know that the several, the work that we did on the Crystal City Central District block plan and site plans, both phases, are now likely to go to the board in September. That's correct, Mr. ... So, we'll just put that off again, so watch that space. I think that's really the only thing I wanted to point out now. We will not meet in August, so enjoy as much of the vacant, open playtime as you can and come back in September, ready to work hard. Thank you very much. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.